Okay. So I will call the October third, twenty twenty four Planning Commission meeting to order, and I'd ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Longley. Your name always trips trips me up. Commissioner Hamilton.
Present.
Commissioner Schulte. Here. Commissioner Geiger.
Here.
Commissioner Burunda.
Here.
Commissioner Brials.
Here.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you. Okay, roll call. So we have in our packets that were available on the city website, both the Planning Commission minutes from the September fifth meeting and December, September nineteenth meeting. Hopefully folks got a chance to review those. Were there any corrections, changes?
Could we open up the September nineteenth minutes? It seemed like they sort of started out in the middle of a sentence or something on the first paragraph.
You're right. By providing an update of review.
Okay. So I'm not sure what the rest of the sentence is going to be, but that's sort of jumped off the page at me.
We're navigating there. Takes a minute. Well, Sybil's looking for that. If there's an easy suggestion to amend them, I think that would be appropriate. If not, we could hold them back and fix that. It sounds like we're missing, I'm not looking at it either, but are we missing a significant amount of material? You think it's chopped off a few words?
Yeah, well, it just starts out by providing an update and the review status and schedule. So I'm not sure what's missing at the front of that sentence.
I'm guessing it might be Mindy started the meeting by providing an update on the review status and schedule.
That would make sense. I believe that's how we started the meeting.
Yeah.
We'll make an emotion to add wording to that first sentence of the September twenty nineteen, section five, A, to begin with, Mandy began by providing an update.
Okay.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Any other corrections or questions?
Was Commissioner Brials present on the nineteenth meeting?
He was online.
Online, decided to be dedicated on here.
And he's online again tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Technology wasn't working last time or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Geiger. I think on the minute it should reflect Commissioner Brials as via Zoom as well. I think I just caught that.
Great.
Okay, good.
Okay, so we have a motion to add that piece on second.
Yeah, I'll move that we correct the minutes as stated.
Thank you.
Anything else? So, okay, with, so I would ask for a motion to adopt both sets of minutes, the September nineteenth as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded.
All in favor?
I.
Okay. Working through our agenda for today.
And I would have let you know earlier, Sybil, but I just read it this afternoon.
We've both been busy.
Okay, so hearings today, so we are to briefings and discussion. Twenty twenty four comprehensive plan update, update the schedule and approach to addressing Planning Commission comments. So I'll turn it over to staff and our consultants.
Mandy, do you want to take it away?
Yes, happy, happy to do so. Thank you, Sybil. Chair Nolan, commissioners, good to be with you. Thank you for allowing me to join remotely. I've been getting over a really bad cold and I just thought it would be better to stay remote tonight. So with that said, we have been very busy, working very hard. And I think the first thing that I want to do is share our updated schedule with you and take a little bit of leisurely time to walk through that. So let me share a screen. Just make sure everyone can see my screen. Well.
Yes, we can. I appreciated that being put together, Mandy. It really lays out our roadmap for us.
Good. And you can see it, right? Because I'm not getting that little green line.
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay. Well, as you'll recall, on on our September nineteenth meeting, I think we were all feeling a little stressed and, you know, like, wow, we have so much to do in a short amount of time. And we saw that quality was getting compromised as well. And so what we've done here is slowed this down a little bit. There are some things that we cannot change, and I'll go through those with you kind of step by step. But we changed the hearing date, so it's now in November. We've basically given you until November twenty first to make your recommendation to city council. So, you know, while we have some kind of interim deadlines to get your comments, you do have into November to really finish up your work and feel satisfied with this product before you hand it over to city council. So I hope that makes everyone feel like they can take kind of a little bit of a sigh of relief. So what we've done, let me just explain, we've regrouped a bit. And we had heard that many of the earlier chapters that we posted, which were the land use, housing, economic vitality, transportation chapters, that there were some issues with those. We have gone back through, scrubbed those. We have responded to all of those planning commission comments that we have received so far on those. And we have both clean and tracked changes versions of those ready to post tomorrow. And so you are free to go back through those, look at them again. You know, in Word with track changes, feel free to do that. I had thought that we still had the old ones posted, but turns out we did take those down because of some of the issues with those. So tomorrow, we're going to repost all of those. Those will be, you know, ready for you to take another look at. I will say, for those of you who have already looked at those, you know, I think your priority should be on looking at the new ones, which I'm going to talk about in a minute. But for those of you who haven't had a chance yet to fully look at those previous elements and get us your comments, those will be ready for you tomorrow to look at. And we've really done a good job of trying to go back through and correct things and check things over. So that is going to be ready for you tomorrow. At the same time, we have been working on the new elements, which includes the environment element, the parks, recreation, and open space element, utilities, and capital facilities. And I'm going to pull those up on screen in a minute and show you those. Those will also be posted for your review tomorrow. One of those, the utilities element, is not as quite far along as the others, but we're hoping to catch up a little bit more on that tomorrow before we post it. There's just been some late breaking utilities information. It takes a lot of coordination with external utilities providers to get updated information. So we've been pulling that together. There's still going to be a few holes in that too, because we don't have all of our research done. But our objective is to get these elements posted so that you guys can review and have time to review. So we'll get that tomorrow for sure. We're going to post it. We're coordinating with staff to make sure these postings are happening. And then at our next meeting in two weeks, October seventeenth, we'd like to have a discussion about your comments on these four elements, as well as some code amendments, which I'm also going to go through with you tonight. That doesn't have to be your end all be all comments on those. But we would like to use the opportunity of the October seventeenth meeting to kind of pick up any big things that you have. And then you can, you know, get us your comments in writing following the meeting. But that's kind of the, that's the immediate next two weeks, okay? Within that timeframe, and here's the part that we really can't change, we do need to go ahead and issue our public and agency review draft, and it will be the draft that you'll see posted tomorrow. But we might make some updates, especially to the utility section before we post it. And when we do that, we will always add a new date to the top of the document. So you can always check and make sure you have the latest document posted. But the reason why we have to go ahead and do that next week on October tenth is primarily because the Department of Commerce requires a sixty day review for their review, and they're going through and looking at policies to to make sure that they're, that the policy updates are aligning with their checklist for updates that are required for all of the city comprehensive plans. And so it takes them some time. And at the same time, we also need to issue the SEPA notice and allow a public review of that. And we'll have all the plans, plan elements online, so the public can review those. Puget Sound Regional Council also reviews. The Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife also reviews. So we're feeling really comfortable with issuing these for review. It's something that we're doing in all the cities that we're working in now. And it, you know, it is kind of just part of the process, that things, everything we've posted has already been publicized. It's been up on, online. We have to be kind of transparent about that. And so, you know, I wish that we could have finished with all of these reviews before we brought this to Planning Commission. But, you know, in reality, that just wasn't possible. And I can tell you, there aren't very many communities where that's happened because of all of the work that everyone has to do right now on all of these comp plans and code updates and everything. So I do hope that you'll be patient with us, and I do hope tomorrow, when you look at the updated versions, that you'll have a better level of confidence with the work that we're doing and publishing. It is all draft, and it's just kind of, we're rolling through these drafts. Everything says draft. And it's meant to be a little bit drafty and, you know, not totally polished and totally finished. Because we don't really get to that point until we get to adoption, which is going to, that the process will start later in November and into December. So I will kind of go, go down and look at those next dates ahead next. So we do have your meeting on the seventeenth. I already talked about that. We also have your meeting on the twenty second, which is a joint meeting, the city council. And tonight, before we close out, Chair Nolan, I would like to get your input on some things that you think would be really important to share and highlight in that joint meeting with city council. Some of the work that we've done together to date, things that you think really need to be highlighted to them. One thing that we've talked about for sure is to have a series of slides where we hit the high points of what's being changed in every element, just to make that very clear, and what code amendments are being processed as well. And I know we've also talked in the past about making sure that we clearly describe to them what we're doing in terms of the zoning adaptation from the town center planned business community zone and adapting that as a new town center zoning that would apply to Mill Creek Boulevard, Town Center South, as we're now calling it, and making a few changes to that. And that would be an interim zoning step until such time as next year, when the city moves forward with more detailed planning on that sub area and more detailed work in design standards. And we have already heard, we were at city council last week, that the city council is still, they still want to avoid being surprised by any development that might come in before they actually have the detailed planning work done. So they may go ahead and institute a moratorium, and they're going to seek legal advice on how to do that and tell such time that 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 planning work is complete next year. So they just feel like that's the best way to ward off any undesirable types of development that may not fit with the plan that they're developing. I'm going to stop right there before I go through the rest of the schedule and just see if there's any questions or anything as to what I've talked about so far, because I know I'm hitting you. That's kind of a lot right here at the beginning.
I got a question. Is it common that the Department of Commerce and them are, we're getting a very rough draft? And then we'll not communicate it to them in like the cover letter that we still expect some changes here, but this is our current mark for review? And do they then ever request a second review if we substantially change or?
No.
Okay.
No, what we do is we keep an open line of communication with them as we're reviewing. And I have to say, they have a new person that handles the Snohomish County Cities. And he's so delightful to work with, very proactive, very communicative. So we just keep them up to date with, you know, as you said, Commissioner Schulte, we let them know that this is a draft, and we're still working on these particular pieces. And we will be making additional updates, and we will let you know what we're updating. That's a lot of the updates that we're making have to do with kind of background data. That is not as much of an interest to Commerce. What they're really interested in are the goals and policies. That's really, you know, and also code amendments that need to align with their checklist of requirements. So that's really what we're doing is making sure that they get a chance to see that, that we are making those changes that they have requested.
Other question? I know. So Mandy, last commission meeting, Commissioner Abrams had mentioned, what we're building the record as we go along with this, and, you know, ultimately, the planning commission's going to be asked to make a recommendation to council on November twenty first. And so, and I like the rolling work that you're doing and the fact you're going to highlight changes as those sections go on. But when do you think we'll be at quote unquote that final or near final document where you've incorporated the changes you're making and maybe incorporating just the last of the commission comments?
Yeah. Well, I, that, I'm glad you asked me that, Chair Nolan, and I've been thinking about that because we have our hearing on November seventh. Funding Commission will host a public hearing. And so I thought shortly following that, and maybe that evening, depending on the public comments that we get, we could get any further comments or recommendations from Planning Commission that night. And then shortly following that, we could button up all the work on the chapters for one final look on your November twenty first meeting or prior to that, a week prior to that, you would get to see it, right? Everything final.
Okay, no, thank you. That helps.
Okay, good. And I do, one other thing though, that I need to say about that is we will start to, you'll see, because I'm going to show you in a minute, that we have a clean version in Word that's really much easier to read, and it looks much better. And then we have the track changes versions. That is our, those are our records of changes that we're making. We will continue to work in Word with the planning commission and through these reviews and with your comments. It's just the most efficient thing to do. We don't pull content into InDesign. If you guys know what that means, it's like the final beautiful layout of things until all of the word is done. And so by the time we go to city council, we'll have that final layout. But I also want to share with you a preview of what, what that would look like for your November seventh and November twenty first meeting. So we're going to start laying the content that we feel really comfortable with, that you guys have reviewed earlier. We're going to start laying that out into InDesign earlier, so you can start to see what that layout will look like. But we won't have the whole thing done until later in November, just so you know, because it just takes time. Yeah.
And then, I see, you know, we have the November ninth date for public comments due back. So when do we have things in place for where they should be sending comments? And currently, currently, I mean, obviously, the documents will be available starting tomorrow. As you mentioned, right, the latest revisions.
Yep.
What is the mechanism by which they send in comments? Like, who are they sending comments to? Is it a?
So we will publish a notice on next Wednesday, October tenth, that I, I think, Mike, I don't know if you want to speak to that, but it'll be published in the places that the city usually publishes their public notices. And it would include a web, you know, web message on the planning commission's website that would announce that we're having a public hearing on November seventh. It would announce that people can access the draft plan chapters online and give them that website. And then, you know, people will be encouraged to come to the hearing to provide comments verbally. But also, we will direct them that they can provide their comments in writing, and usually that they go to a staff person. So, you know, probably that would be Sybil. We haven't, I haven't confirmed that. But, you know, we'll direct people to give their comments to staff to then give to us.
It will probably do that with an email to Planning at City Mill Creek as opposed to a
Okay.
But it's probably behind the scenes, probably Sybil with somebody else watching, to make sure we don't miss stuff.
Yeah.
Okay. Mandy, will the, will the documents that you're talking about, will they be attachments to what I'm going to call the Quessite final draft?
Well, they will, they will be the final draft, so they'll be.
Will, will the, will the work product, will the work product that leads up to the development final draft be attached to the final draft? So if someone wants to look back.
Yeah.
Assess how it was evolved. They'll be able to do that.
Yeah, I don't know if there'll be attachments, but more we can make it an appendix. You know, planning commission records or something like that. Yeah.
Yeah, as long as there, again, as long as there is a record.
Yeah.
Describes the historical development.
Yeah.
The final product, and that's fine.
Very much so. And we also, in addition to creating these clean and track changes versions, we have another set of documents that have your comments in them that we've received. And we've been responding to those. So we're going to put those in another location. I don't want to confuse the public or you all. So I need to work that out with staff, whether we put those in a shared drive or someplace, but just so you can access those and know, you know, individually that we've responded to your comments and you have a record of that. So we'll work that out in whatever legal way we need to. Yeah.
However, it's going to be developed.
Yeah.
It just needs to be a pretty clear cut development of that process so that there is no ambiguity that occurs between how we started and how we ended. That's all. So as long as you can make it very clean and clear in your appendices, then that's fine, in my opinion. If it's not, then there's going to be some real confusion that people outside of those who have been involved in this are going to have. That's all.
Yes, good.
It's a complicated document, so.
It is. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, so it seems like you guys have absorbed the schedule pretty well. A couple of other points I'll just make is that we will, we are briefing city council now at every one of their meetings just to kind of say, hey, get ready. And by the way, these documents are on the planning commission website if you want to preview them. Just so we don't get to them in November and have them be unfamiliar or unsure about what we've been going through or what the schedule ahead will be. So the official handoff to them should be that November twenty sixth meeting. You know, at least at that point, we should be able to give them your recommendation. And if somebody wants to come to that meeting from the planning commission and do that verbally along with, you know, we'll have a written recommendation from you, that's great. But at that November twenty sixth meeting, and that might get changed, because I understand that they're thinking about canceling that meeting due to the fact that it's Thanksgiving week. So it may actually go to December third or sometime in there. But at some point, there will be a handoff in late November, early December to city council. Then they will deliberate, and, you know, typically, that's a two to three meeting extent in many of the cities that we've been working with. I think that what will help that is all of these pre-briefings that we are doing between now and then with city council and the joint meeting that we have on October twenty second. But they will also hold another public hearing just for city council. And we don't know exactly what date that will be yet, but it could be the tenth. So stay tuned. We're still kind of working out, working that out with them and their schedule.
Can I ask one more question, Ms. Allen? At the public hearing, will Matt, for example, who's the head of the commission, be entitled to explain the rationale that the planning commission had in the development of the documents?
Yes, if the chair so chooses, and then I can also help with that. And Mike, it looks like you might want to say something.
Yeah, so I think you're saying the public hearing, or at the, at the council, I think you are going to, by resolution, you're going to say, we resolve that this is our recommendation to city council. Whatever you want to say. I think Matt is your chair, or anybody could come by your own election and say, somebody's going to come and present this and point out some high points or talk about some difficult things or whatever you want to do. I think you have that opportunity. I think what the council would probably do is open the public hearing, accept your, your input, your, here's your recommendation, your explanation, and then they would ask the public for other comments. They would close the public hearing and then talk about that. It's pretty typical, is how they typically do public hearings. I'm going to look at Sean, I think it becomes where Paddock is also concurring on that. And I think we'd like to have that public hearing. It's going to be a second public hearing. You will have had a public hearing, but we're going to give the public a second chance at it, because they may not be watching for yours. And so that's what we typically do is to.
And then our public hearing, you know, our, our goal is to invite the public in, have them give us any comments. We close the hearing, and then we deliberate or comment on whatever suggestions, input they've provided, either asking, you know, staff, the consultants to look into something updated or not. And then hopefully, we have a clean version of responses to those issues raised by the citizens as we get to that one week prior to the November twenty first recommendation. So we know, hey, we responded to citizen ABC's comment, and we've done X, Y, Z. Okay. Any other, because that was item one on our agenda is update schedule and approach to addressing commission. Any?
And then I'd like to walk through some of the content with you, Chair.
Yeah, that's item two. So I just thought we'd get through item one. And then two is discuss planning commissioners' comments on content previously distributed and receiving additional comments. And I don't believe we were able to provide additional comments back to her first, because I believe it was locked down.
Correct, yeah. Although we did get some comments just today from Commissioner Schulte. And I appreciate that. Thank you, Commissioner Schulte. And I think she was commenting on the previous versions, which is great. I will say that in the version that we post tomorrow, just, just so you know, please know, we won't, we will address your comments, but those will not be addressed in tomorrow's version.
Yeah, I don't expect them to.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. And that's kind of part of this rolling review, is I just want to reassure you that we will be addressing. But, you know, it might, it's going to be in the next round that we get to those, so.
So Wendy, not that I'm pushing for any more meetings, but we're going to have our public hearing on November seventh. And then it's two weeks later on the twenty first, final discussions, any remaining comments that have come in and send a recommendation to the council. Should we have something in between those two to sort of get that finalized? Or is that, is the twenty first, is that all going to be possible on the twenty first of November?
I think so. I do. Yeah.
Okay.
Why don't we see how November seventh goes?
Yes.
If we need an emergency meeting, perhaps we could look at it at that point. If we need an emergency meeting, perhaps we could look at it at that point.
We'd have to notice it stuff, but yeah.
See how comfortable, yeah, see how comfortable you're feeling about um the content at that point and the and what level of comments we might get, you know.
So with all of our public meeting notifications, should something be tentatively put on the schedule? What, like by the twentieth of October? Isn't just take a month?
Special meeting notification.
No, it would be one week because this is a special meeting too, right? So we do the is the same as a regular meeting.
Maybe try to do it on the fourteenth, so yeah.
So we would decide, depending on the amount of comments and where we're at on the seventh. Planning commission would make a recommendation and and we would notice to the public a meeting on the fourteenth.
Just didn't want to miss our announcement window if we had to.
No, just that I would have to post the agenda and back background materials by the seventh for it to be legit by the fourteenth.
Okay, so it's gonna have to at least be tentative before we have our meeting on the night of the.
Yeah. You're making a good point. Can we just say tentative potential meeting? Do notice for tentative meeting?
Do that. We'll check. We'll check to see how we can do that. It's seven days, but you could you do it? Like if we have trouble on the night of November seventh, can we post it at ten o'clock the next morning and qualify? I'm not quite sure. We'll check on that. I would, I would like to thank you. You all have done a very thorough job of thinking about lots of stuff and you've had a lot of media input upfront. So the likelihood of some surprise going like, oh, my gosh, hadn't thought of that on November seventh is pretty unlikely. I think the nature of the comments you're gonna get are minor tweaks and hopefully during the seventh, that's your work product. You you listen to the community and you say, okay, here's three issues. And hopefully you can resolve those that night. Or your recommendation for the twenty first. It would only be if you like, oh, my gosh, we need some data. Staff's got hustle off and get something. That's what would go wrong. So it's a little dangerous, but um that's kind of what we're dealt, that we're dealt.
And we have also the meeting on the twenty first. If there are things as we get there, you know, the the work product the week before the fourteen. Then we can comment and then do a, you know, we'll have a draft motion, our recommendation for council, but we can amend it.
In the past, how many people have shown up for a public hearing at the planning commission on stuff like this?
Usually, there are very few people who show up to our hearings.
Usually you can count them on one hand.
There might be a.
I think you're more likely to get written comments ahead of time, and I think those will be the substantive ones.
We have not been a big draw historically.
As much as we like to think planning is so interesting, right? Yeah. Okay. Well, let me share with you some other things here. See how adeptly I can do this. Um, so I think the first thing I want to share with you is the environment. Uh, chapter, which is one of the new ones that'll be posted tomorrow. So we will have the track changes version. So you'll be able to see the language being changed. By the way, can everybody see my screen? Says environment element. Okay, good. And um, you know, as you guys pointed out in the last meeting, there's so much change going on. It looks kind of messy and it's hard to follow. So we do need to do a track changes version for the record, so we will have that posted. But we will also have a clean version, which I'll show you in a minute. And these are, so you can kind of see the level of change that we're making uh in these. And um again, some of these changes have to do with what we know the Department of Fish and Wildlife is going to be looking for. Um, what we know the level of detail is that's required of of um comprehensive plans. We, we are, one of the things we've been talking about lately is in your twenty fifteen plan, there was a lot of detail. And you know, some just kind of courting with staff, some of that level of detail may not be needed. It's not required. So we are trying to, you know, right size the amount of background information to what's really required for these comp plans, just so you know. And that's just gonna be a little bit of an ongoing process, but this is messy. And so I could see how you guys were going, oh, my gosh, this is so hard to review and it's messy and it's not formatted and all of that. So what we decided to do is say, okay, we're gonna do that. That's gonna stay as our record. But we are also going to give you a clean version. So let me show you that um, that one. Hold on here. Okay. And we just talked about this when I, when I left the office today. We're gonna add right up here in the corner the date of each of these elements so that it's really clear. You know, if we do make updates, that if there's a later date, that it's clear that that's a later update to everybody. But here's the clean version. You know, it's still not our fancy version of the in design layout that I keep talking about that'll have more colorful graphics and photos and things like that. But this one is much easier to read and go through and add your comments in with new track changes. So I, I think it would be completely fine and I suggest that if you want to comment on these elements that you do it in a clean version with track changes, okay? And that'll just be really clear for us to see your most recent comments. If you want to go back and understand what's changed, feel free to reference the track changes document. But I I think it's just too messy to work in that because there is so much change going on. So I'm gonna just stop right there. We have a few questions in here and that's just kind of normal as we work with staff, things that we're gonna update. But this is pretty much ready for your review. We're gonna post it tomorrow. And I'll show you a couple of the other sections too, but before I go to those, I just want to see what your thoughts are about this. If it seems clear, that kind of thing.
Well, I like your suggestion for us to work on the clean copy and it's just would be way too difficult to look at all that non you added content that's been crossed off.
Yeah, yeah. And I could see how that was frustrating before because that's kind of the method that we started with and so we rethought that and I think this will be a lot better. So, so environment is one of the new ones. Um another one of the new ones is the parks element, which we also undeniably call pros, you guys, but parks, recreation and open space. And um you know, again, this is the clean version. We have a few notes in there. Things that we're still working on. Um, one of the requirements of comprehensive plans is that we have a reference to level of service standards. So you will see those in in the parks, recreation and open space element and in other elements. And the reason why we're required to have that is because as the community grows we need to continue to meet those levels of service for different aspects, so parks, transportation, utilities and so forth. Um, so it's just a mechanism to be able to keep pace with growth. Um, as we talked about last time, the city is planning to to do a new parks, recreation and open space and open space master plan next year. And so that's when probably those level of service standards will be updated. And and that might mean that a comprehensive plan amendment would be needed to reflect any updates in that, so. That happens, you know, that you do interim updates on your comprehensive plan in interim years for things like that. So it's pretty standard. Uh, so this is the parks element that you'll see. We also have the the ugly track changes version. And um yeah, it'll be great to get your comments on these. Let me show you a couple of other ones. Capital facilities. Here's the clean version of capital facilities element. And a lot of times there's some kind of confusion about what's the difference between capital facilities and utilities, right? And some cities have even combined those elements into one. But technically, there's, they're kind of supposed to be treated separately because the capital facilities are the ones that the city directly manages. So for you guys, you do directly manage some of your parks, your transportation facilities and your stormwater facilities as well as city operated facilities like city hall and city owned buildings and things like that. So the CIP and and the capital facilities is element is a companion to your CIP. It focuses on those facilities that you directly manage, whereas the utilities element focuses on utilities mostly managed by others and even like solid waste is considered to be a utility. We just saw today that we needed, we need to add more in about your solid waste services to the to the utilities chapter, for example. But um, that is, the reason why we do that as part of comprehensive planning is because the state and the Growth Management Act say, we want to make sure that as cities grow they're coordinating with everybody else besides themselves. So the capital facility says you're coordinating internally your own growth and the services and facilities that you need to serve that with parks, transportation, stormwater and your city facilities. The utilities element says you are coordinating with the PUD and Puget Sound Energy and water and sewer districts to let them know, hey, here are our growth targets. This is our plan for growth for the next twenty years. And we'd like to, you know, get updates from you on how you're planning to serve that growth. So it's really kind of showing them that we're coordinating, we're getting updated information and um reflecting that in our plan. So that's, that's really the purpose of of those two elements and the differences between them. So I will pause there to just see if there's any questions on that before I show you the utility section, which is the one that's kind of lagging behind a little bit.
I'll just have a quick question. You know, you mentioned that different and and the of what it means to be a capital facility versus the utilities. Um, I guess maybe we'll see it in the document, but that's kind of clearly stated in that kind of opening section. Okay, thank you.
So I have a question, Salin. Um, this might be something that you wanted to bring up at the end of the meeting, but it's a good time to do it. You're talking about coordination. Um, are you, I have not seen anything in the document which talks about interlocal arrangements. Okay, um, interlocal because we are working in a in an or in a in a regional aspect, there are different communities which are right on the borders of each other. So are we thinking in this twenty year plan to do interlocal arrangements with various other smaller communities like Baco's not small, Everett's not small, but Silver Lake is relatively small. So are we thinking about doing that? And when you're talking about utilities, okay, yeah, utilities are not just Mill Creek utilities. Utilities are all throughout the region. So how are we gonna integrate with the various groups? I haven't seen it. I haven't seen any discussion of that. I don't know if it's necessary, if this is the wrong document to do that.
When we do, yeah. Excuse me, I'm sorry. When, when the city does have formal interlocal agreements, it's usually because they might have jointly managed facilities or, you know, um, they need to separate who's responsible for what. And so those aren't always required for utility services, but um, I think it it is good to note where we have those in place and um, and that's kind of one of the things that Mike and I have been talking about lately is we just need to get a little bit of an update on from maybe the city's legal department on what, you know, what some of these agreements or arrangements are. And in some cases, there may not be any, but I I know, for example, we're working in the city of Shoreline and they have an agreement for part of their city with um Seattle City Light that has to do with undergrounding of utilities, which is, by the way, has caused a lot of um consternation, but um that is very, you know, that's an interlocal agreement. It's very specific to a location and a an action. And so that's kind of an example. And in Mill Creek, we just need to kind of confirm if if there are some formal agreements in place like that.
I I would say, Mr. Abrams, I mean, the introduction pieces of the document to talk about how this is a flowdown from Puget Sound Regional Council, which is assigned to growth targets, assigned traffic targets, assigned all those pieces. And we, we need to make sure as we see this final document, you you've incorporated those pieces into it just to show, yes, there is coordination. Mill Creek's accepting its growth. It's accepting its traffic, dealing with those in these ways in the document, whether it be Snohomish County or whatever, but yeah, the 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 intro should cover those pieces that show there is the more broad scale coordination and the the existing document has that in it.
Yeah, my my only comment to what Matt said is that's perfect, but I think it should be reflected that, yes, we recognize that coordination is going to be done in X, Y, and Z areas and over the next twenty years, as identified within the in the, in the comprehensive plan, this is what we're anticipating. Okay, you're not gonna know with specificity what it is, but you're at least identifying it so that questions won't arise which saying, well, my God, what are you gonna do about this? So that's all. It's reflecting a record which demonstrates that you've thought about it and you put in two or three sentences about it.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah, very good, very good point.
I think you're really, really good point. And I'm gonna fall on the sword that Mandy and I had this realization yesterday and have dealt with it to talk about today in terms of how different cities have looked at capital facility and utilities things. I think there's some lessons we could learn from some other folks. All right, well, look at the twenty fifteen plan. I think staff in the past had a lot of description about very technical details of what the PUD was gonna do or what Silver Lake Water is gonna do. We're gonna strip that stuff out because it doesn't make sense to try to mimic what's in their plan. Shoreline did a really nice job of saying we work with the water district in this fashion. Here's how it works. It covers this part of the city. Look at the water district plan for their comprehensive plan because they're also doing comprehensive plans, not in the same cycle. So I think you'll see that and that's what we're gonna scramble on and try to get published by tomorrow, is that kind of thing. You make a really good point that and if, as we decide to annex or if we decide to annex, we need to make sure that the facilities by those provided by those part utility partners are also available. We're kind of in a situation where we get the Swiss cheese thing we've talked about before where Snohomish County is doing the planning for the area. So to our west we're trusting Snohomish County to have talked to the PUD about making sure there's enough electricity for the density they're planning for light rail community. You know, all those things are going on. At some point, we might annex and we will take that from the county. But we are indeed assuming other folks are doing that. And you raise a really good point that we need to think about it. Up to this point, we were thinking about what's gonna be the impact of our growth. We've been focused on, is there enough capacity for electricity in the sub area? And the answer is, yes, we got lots of electricity. Is there enough gas? Yes, there's enough gas. Water District worried about it? No, they're not worried about it. We were checking the box that way, but I'm thinking now that we have some work to do, so the the draft you're gonna see tomorrow is they're gonna have a lot of work to do. That's something we're gonna hustle on to say, how do we reflect those uh, relationships? Many, most cases, they're not interlocal relationships. You, you are a customer of Silver Lake Water. They have a district that happens to overlap with Mill Creek. We don't really run that, but we work with them. Um, one difference is in our previous plan, it talked about us contracting with so with Fire District number seven because that was our responsibility to provide services. We contracted it. The citizens have elected to annex, and so the language now talks about, now they're a partner of ours, but the the fire services are provided by uh, South County Regional Fire Authority instead. So we're making those kinds of changes. And I I apologize, staff wasn't jumping on that early enough to to do some of those things that Manny and I have been talking about last couple of days.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't seen anything on annexation. You mentioned annexation for the first time. So I mean, if there is a consideration for annexing, then that's fine, but it should be reflected in this document that we are considering annexing. Just again, putting people on notice.
I mean, Mandy, can you clarify? Because we don't plan for the Muga. That's Snohomish County.
Correct, yeah.
Be doing that piece.
Right now, the city doesn't have any formal plans for annexation. We've had, we've talked about it just to confirm, but there's no formal plan or proposal going forward, so that's not included.
But maybe a reference to that in the introduction or somewhere that says the city has this MOGA. Uh, the, the planning. We are, you know, in the next twenty years, we might choose to do this and how those plans work together.
So I've heard electricity and gas mentioned with. With the electrification of the state of Washington doing away with natural gas, what is our? Plant, what, what's our comprehensive plan for the next twenty years going to say we're planning on doing? Will that be addressed at all?
Well, I think we get to follow along. Matt knows about this a lot from his day job, I think. I get, we, we get to follow along with what the state does. I don't think the state will mandate. No, no natural gas by personal read of the way it is, but I think it will be a reduction in the new installations.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is something we've been talking to P S E about and they're kind of going like, yeah, you know, yes, we have enough capacity. Is the answer that we're concerned about. If they have extra capacity. That's not our problem necessarily.
Snohomish County P U D I know is also looking at that. That's an issue.
Yeah, I guess maybe somehow it should just be mentioned in this document that we. We at least thought about it and this, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you just have to demonstrate the interplay between jurisdictions. And it doesn't have to be long. It doesn't have to be complicated. It just says there is an interplay. These are the types of. Things that may happen over the next twenty years. You're not going to know them right now, but you, you're, you're foreseeing that there may be an eventuality. That's all.
Okay. Good.
So other pieces of our discussion, the comments on previously section and the overview. Andy, because you also mentioned that you wanted to talk about. Uh, additional code.
I do. I want to, I want to open that up in a moment. So utilities element, just to show you that, it starts out pretty gentle, but. There are definitely some areas that we're still updating and adding information to, so. Um. Just when you see that, just, just note that in your review. And right now, we just, we only have a track changes version, but I'm hoping tomorrow we'll have a more of a clean version to post for your review. So yeah, let's talk about code um, for a moment. So there are a number of. Amendments to. The Mill Creek Municipal Code. That need to be made and some of them are. Barely mundane, but we will post these code chapters with track changes amendments for you. Um, in the same folder, we might, we might do a subfolder. I'm not sure. I think. Not sure how you have that set up. Civil isn't a folder? Is it just right online, just posted right online, right?
Yeah, it, it would be its own folder, but.
Yeah.
Be online, yeah.
Okay. So, you know, for example, and some of these are sort of technical, but. We're, we'll highlight only those. Changes, only those sections where changes are being made. And for Title Eight, I'm just going to read my notes from Emily here because she gave me kind of a little script. So this, the change that's required is due to um, a. A revised Code of Washington, right? So that's a law, R C W. Seventy A point two oh five point oh four oh three. That says that um, we need to allow for the citing of organic materials management facilities in local solid waste management plans. So there's, because we have this chapter on solid waste collection and disposal, we needed to add that provision in. It's a state requirement. So. You know, as, as you guys look through these, know that what's really driving a lot of these changes are state requirements in their state checklist. And some of them, like this one in Chapter Eight, are really minor change. We were adding that new section in. And so we just want you to be aware of that and, you know, that'll be part of what you recommend for adoption. As part of this package. And with some of these things, we have to change as part of the comp plan. Commerce is asking us to make these changes. Concurrently because of the laws and being in compliance with the laws. That there's a whole set of middle housing provisions that we've talked about in the past. That do not need to be changed until next year. They're not due until June of twenty twenty five. So we're not going to try to push those through. We're going to give those time next year. Anything that's related to accessory dwelling unit changes or middle housing unit changes, we can. Take care of um, next year for that. Another code chapter, so there's a. Chapter eight or excuse me, Title Eight, I should say. Another one that we're working on is Title Fourteen. I'll open that up real quick. And it's called Development Code Administration. And we're making some changes in the code administration. To um, change some of the wording around the use types. And again, this is driven by state. Definitions. And um, making sure it's, it's clear. You know, that whether we're talking about a detached or. A, a attached dwelling unit. Uh, and because we're, we are going to be introducing so many different types of dwelling units with middle housing. We're moving away from the use of single family and just going with detached and attached units. Because it's just going to be much more clear in the end. So you'll see that. That change in Title Fourteen. And then the last one, which has more changes in it in draft is Title Seventeen. So let me open that one up. Oops, wrong. Hold on here. And I am, I see if Justin's still on in a moment, I'm going to ask him to just. Talk about any other um, changes that we might be posting for your review coming up here. But um, this is one that we've been kind of working on jointly with staff and it has to do with the zoning. Um, we've talked about um, combining um, the P R D zone with the low density residential zone. We're still working on that, but what we've got here for Title Seventeen. Are um, a number of changes that have to do with requirements for low income. Senior disabled and market rate housing units located near high quality transit service. And again, these are directly related to R C Ws that. Were um, adopted in twenty twenty and twenty nineteen that require these changes to local codes. So we need to go in and make these changes and everything is in track changes as you'll see. So you'll be able to. Read all of the changes that are being made and these are all driven by the state. So it's not like we have a lot of choice, honestly. But we do want you to read them and we can certainly talk about them on October seventeenth. If you have any questions, okay, about these.
And those are posted tomorrow?
Yeah, those will be posted tomorrow as well. Yep.
I'm gonna ask just a, you know, not into the details of what the code specifically says, but just generically a process question. You know, you mentioned some code, some codes updates are going to be because of state laws. Some of them are potentially because of the choices we make in our comprehensive plan. Are we just required to distinguish those two as we go through the approval of the code amendments? Right? Like you mentioned, some is the state law. It's not really going to be up for a lot of debate about wordsmithing. That like, is there something where we clearly did um, identify those two categories?
We do, we do have a checklist. Um, that might be helpful for us to post. So let me check with the team. It's the Department of Commerce Checklist on Code Amendments. And it, I think it clearly specifies those that are state driven that you would be able to look at and cross check.
Well, I guess maybe I meant more along the lines that like when we go and review the package, like we'll be saying, we're review, we're. This specific set of code amendments are because of love, you know. Maybe eight, one meeting is just code amendments for, we have to adopt as is.
If the, if the track changes for. All the state required stuff would be one color and then the stuff that's not state required be another color.
Yeah.
Could readily see it instead of having to go look at a table and find it.
You're highlighting, Mandy, for instance, you just, your most recent discussion here was all about. Community housing and being near transit, but I noticed highlighted you also had community business.
Mm hmm.
We're talking about, and so is that because of a state law to, so.
Right, okay.
Oh, wait a second.
Yeah, the community business is more because we need to change the zoning to achieve our targets. Which is also a state requirement, but I, you know, it's all pretty much state driven, to be honest, but I, I see your point. Um. Let, let's regroup with staff. We'll regroup with them tomorrow because I want to check in with Justin to make sure we're capturing all the changes. We may not be able to post code. Related changes until early next week, but we will. Be proactive and keep you informed of that. Okay. Yeah, Justin, you want to jump in?
Yeah, and in some of the past um, couple of updates, what Steph has done is actually. Have like, they'll have the list of all the changes because we have to have, you know, that, that, that track change. And then you can include, uh, like you can have a, uh, have a table that says why each of those changes is made. Um, so we could say, you know, state requirement, state requirement. Or discretionary. I mean, it's something, it's a, we could create a matrix like that, certainly.
Yeah, I think it'll just help us out in the end of, I think it'll make the meetings go faster. If we don't start arguing about something and you have to, you know, raise your hand, you know, that's not even up for debate.
Okay, got it.
Maybe it could be. Most, most, uh, at this point, pretty much all the changes we've made have been state driven. Um, I have made some just small quality of life changes, like. We recently split our public works. And um, development services department into two departments, so public works and. Community development. So they had to update all the references to those departments, with stuff like that where um. Are included, but there aren't, we haven't done very many discretionary changes um, other than. Um, changing the zoning for the sub area and combining the two very similar uh, residential zones.
And I asked, as long as you just mentioned that some areas, uh, I think two meetings ago, we talked about the area. The old doggy daycare proposal, kind of east of Sprouts and that changing that, and then that. Discussion dropped and I assume we're not looking to change that zoning right now.
That's correct.
They actually submitted a, uh, they actually submit an application to um, change the zoning. Um, and they, based on when they submitted it, it'll be considered during the twenty twenty five comp plan. Annual comp plan update.
Good, good, because we just have a lot on the table right now and it's good.
Yeah.
So this is Alan. Uh, we also talked about last meeting. The issue of uh, the fourth sub zone, or there's the first, the first sub area. Pardon me?
Is your mic on? My should be on.
Oh, I'll take my mask off. Um, which is east of five twenty seven. Remember, we talked about the three already identified subareas and then there was paragraph in there. Where it talked about. Areas within the residential zones east of five twenty seven. What's going on with that? I mean, we all agreed, yeah, there it is. And so. Mandy was going to go back and review that with her staff.
That down by Seattle Hill Road.
Figure out what happened.
Down by Old Seattle Hill Road, was that one of them?
Well, just, you, you look at uh, Mill Creek Boulevard and you go up, that's.
Yeah, I, I'm going to go check on that. Um, I think we. We deleted that because of the confusion. It's not an official sub area, so. I'll check on that. Thanks for reminding me about that, Commissioner Abrams.
Yeah, and there is a distinction that you, someone should consider, which is. There is a state requirement, there are discretionary activities. Um, how are we defining? I mean, are the state requirements going to be identified so that we can review them? And say, yes, this is a state requirement, or is this simply an interpretation of a state requirement? Okay.
Well, it's, yeah.
How is that going to happen?
Yeah, I think um. You know, Justin suggested a matrix. I think that would be a good idea. The, the language that the state requests is pretty clear. It's not, we're not just making it up. It's pretty. It's pretty clear what, you know, what we need to do and what we need to change. So we'll just make that clear in a matrix so you know.
Well, everyone knows that state requirements are inherently ambiguous. Um, so um, we may think it's clear, but. Once you get into a court of law, you'll find out that they're very ambiguous. So that's all, just word of caution.
Sure.
I would, I would point out that that's one of the reasons we send our, our draft to commerce is so they can look. Um, they have a list of all the state changes they're required to. They're required to look at our comp plan and make sure that we have met all those state rules, so um. I mean, presumably if there are any issues with the way we've worded it or interpreted it, commerce will catch those ahead of time and um, and flag it for us.
Great.
Other questions about upcoming code amendment? Um, did I see that there was a stormwater section too that was updated? That might not necessarily be a.
Yes, um, there, there is. Discussion of stormwater in the capital facilities element because again, that's a city. Um, managed. Facility and um. We are still noodling on that a little bit with staff based on the recent um. You know, actions that, that the city's taking to. Be in better compliance with some of the state requirements. So. That is in, in, but we may be adding more to it, just so you know. And um. I guess one of the things I want to say about. Some of this background data compliance is. You know, maybe, hopefully this will make you feel a little bit at ease, but. It's not, it, it's not planning commission's job to. To know all that and make sure that we're in compliance with all that. It's our job to do that and city staff's job. We, so we have some work to do to make sure that we're up to date on some of those things and that we've got the right language in there. I think you, what your role is, is to, to look at this and review it and feel like we're sufficient, like we're sufficiently doing our job. And ask us questions, but you guys shouldn't have to wordsmith that material or. You know, try to suggest technical content or anything like that. So. I just wanted to kind of make that clear because. You know, that's not expected of the planning commission. And one of the things that is really. Important in your role as commissioners. Is making sure that this plan aligns with the values and goals and policies of your community. And that's one of the reasons why we spent all of those meetings throughout. The spring and summer with you going through all the goals and policies of, you'll remember. Like working on that together because that's a really important role for the planning commission. And we feel like we got, we had a lot of great discussion, a lot of great input in that. And so now kind of what's left is this um, all this background data and updating it, making sure that we've got the latest information from the P U D and that. We're, we've got the latest um, Washington State um, Department of Ecology requirements um, noted and all of that and. You guys shouldn't have to deal with that. That's really our job. So I'm just kind of trying to take a little bit of the pressure off you for that kind of stuff. And again, as Justin said, if we are missing anything, the state will let us know.
Other material for us, Mandy, or any other questions?
No, the only other thing I just wanted to maybe spend a couple of minutes on is just the upcoming October twenty second meeting. And if you all have suggestions for discussion topics for that meeting, things that you think are really important that we'd like to share with city council.
And I would say if you don't have something off the top of your head, if you think about it, the idea is how do we focus this meeting when you're all sitting here with. With the city council, how do we focus on the big issues that you may have wrestled with? That you think they also need to be aware of. So that if, again, we're trying to be smooth when your recommendation goes to them at the end of November. We're trying to avoid the, oh gosh, let's talk about that thing. So this is one chance for you to say, now that you've been through the whole, whole document, you've listened to the community.
I, I think the big pieces I see are, you know, obviously the land use. The south of Mill Creek Town Center and then uh, they, they may get caught off guard by the switch to arterials. switch to arterials, because that, you know, they're community.
Yeah.
I I think you wanna at least come out and let them know Seattle Hill Road's now gonna be called an arterial, hundred and forty eighth between thirty fifth and
Okay.
William is now an arterial. Those are big. You, when you take something from a quote unquote local road to an arterial, you know, it actually goes and it's recorded differently by the state and that kind of thing. You get a different funding source on those. Your miles of arterial are now going up significantly in the city. Okay, so.
Wait, and you become eligible for other funding too, because of that. But I think, thank you so much for mentioning that, Chair Nolan. I think we should perhaps see if our subconsultant from Transpo could join for that meeting to explain that piece. That would be good. So we'll, we'll check in with Drew on that.
So one of my concerns is the interplay of the transportation where we're adding our our growth. So our worst intersection, you know, is that hundred sixty fourth and both other highway that's like at E projected, you know, and we're putting all this new housing and new jobs right in the middle of that corridor. We just, you know, I think that make sure people know the expectation is that's not likely to improve and likely get worse with growth. Just that, that's one of the hazards of doing that.
Yeah. Yeah, we've had a lot of conversations about that in the past and
Yeah, cuz.
Role for that intersection, you know, is.
Did the, when you did the twenty.
Yeah.
When you did the twenty fifty outlays, was that with reflecting that we changed the land use designations in in that to what we're planning to put there?
Yeah. It is. The other reason, though, I'll just kind of make a a counterpoint to that, the other reason why we're locating our growth in that area is because we have proximity to high capacity transit. That's the kind of the epicenter of high capacity transit in that corridor with the swift lines and stops. And of course, one of those will now take people directly out to the Everett Link Light Rail System that just opened. And that will be extending up to Everett and extends, you know, a point south. And so as a region, as we grow, that's where we're supposed to put growth, is where we have high capacity transit access, right? Unfortunately, you know, that quarter also carries a lot of traffic, and so it's it's a balance that we're trying to achieve. Another thing that would can be looked at and explored more fully when you guys move into that Mill Creek Boulevard Town Center South more detailed planning work is the idea of having mixed use development in a compact form where you have more people living and working and running errands and going to City Hall all kind of in proximity. That is naturally a way to reduce trip making in your community as well. So that's another, you know, hopeful mitigation measure of converting more trips to walking and biking and transit when we, you know, put mixed use together. So we're trying to do the best things, but that doesn't mean that that intersection's gonna be a joy for people in the future, right? Yeah. We have had a lot of discussions in the past, and I don't think you were on the commission at that time, Commissioner Shulte, when we were talking about what is the appropriate role of Mill Creek Boulevard? You know, because a lot of people have been using it as a cut through. And should it, you know, at one point, the discussion was, well, should it be upgraded to more of a collector, multi-lane, so it carries that traffic? And really, the consensus or the feedback that we got from the commission and from our advisory group that we were working with and property owners is that that's really, that role of cut through and through traffic should stay on the highways. And that that piece of Mill Creek Boulevard should function more as a local business street, you know, similar to how I guess it's Main Street, right, that goes through Town Center, should be like that. So that's you know, kind of what we've been hearing so far, and hopefully that gets carried forward into the planning, because seems like that's an important perspective that people have, so.
And and at the time, that was actually council, that was a a deliberation in a piece that they knew about and understood, because there was capital projects on Mill Creek Boulevard and Hundred and Sixty Fourth that literally would have made it a better cut through, and they chose to de-emphasize that project, so.
But that is probably one of the issues we should talk about on the twenty second.
Think the whole land use and traffic changes, I think, are things that that council will always have an interest in.
Okay, good.
Good point.
Other questions or comments for the twenty second meeting? And if you, as as Mandy said, if you think about something, just email and. Other things, Mandy?
That's it for me. Sorry, I know I've been doing a lot of talking.
So that moves us down to for the good of the order. So Civil, Mike, anything for the good of the order?
I have a couple of announcements quickly. Do you wanna, do you wanna go first? Okay, one thing that's coming up is there's a a move afoot to, for all of our boards and commissions for the city, is to create some rules of procedure. You, as planning commission, have them. They are in ordinance six and seven, which means they were like among the first ordinances ever passed by the city. So there's a move afoot to to create new bylaws. There'd been a request for the planning commission to be the guinea pigs to take these new bylaws. We've talked to Commissioner Nolan, we've talked to staff, and we're saying, you guys have a very full plate right now, but when would there's an opportunity, that will be coming to you for your review. They're fairly standard bylaws, but if if you've ever read bylaws, it's twelve pages of stuff. And it doesn't really change the things you're doing necessarily, but we'll want to look through those and make sure it doesn't that what's being proposed by the attorneys and and the clerk's office are not a problem. So that will be on your plate, but be assured, staff is trying to, trying to meter that back, so that you've got some time to work on that. Second announcement is some of you may remember Bill Trim. We're gonna meet with Bill Trim next Monday. He, we've got him in the consulting contract. Bill Trim was the community development director here for many years. He was the guy I kind of referred to as the father of Town Center, did an excellent job of helping bring the community together and envision what became Town Center. We're gonna have him come in, work with staff next week to start putting together what we call an RFQ, a Request for Qualifications. We'd go out and find the right kind of planning agencies and firms to help us with this Mill Creek Boulevard subarea. So while the council was concerned about, do we have to slap moratorium on? The other approach is to to not to have the negative approach, but to say that's promote this. We are going to have a contract with a consultant in place, first thing in twenty twenty five is our intention. And we're working really hard on getting, making this a better place for developers, because of the things we're gonna work. So we've got a new community development director's coming on. Jeffrey Ryan is his name. He's gonna be starting on November eighteenth. And so that's a ways out. And so he'll be having to jump right in and run with this thing, but we wanna make sure when he gets here, we already have the RFQ on the street. We've got some proposals back. He can be involved with helping pick those those folks and then get a contract and move with all due haste as we go into two twenty twenty five to get that Mill Creek Boulevard Subarea Plan, the Plan Action E I S, all those things. So some exciting things going on. And we're excited with staff to meet up with Bill. Some people have met him before, I've spent a lot of time with him. Some people, it's brand new, but he's a great idea guy, and the fact he knows Mill Creek from the beginning is, I think it'd be good for the community to understand that we've got the the grandfather of Town Center involvement, and it's gonna help us a lot in terms of how we pick some good consultants and use a good process.
Okay, no, thank you.
Oh, yeah, so it is, so so Jeffrey Ryan will be coming on. So we're gonna go back to a more traditional structure. Most cities have a Director of Community Development or Community Development Department, or it's also a planning department, or sometimes some kind of names like that. Then we have a Public Works Department. So this citizen's about twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, put those together, where we kind of got built out, some staff changes. Work level went down. The grand idea was, let's save some money. Let's have somebody try to do both these jobs. It's absolutely impossible. I can tell you that. Particularly when we're missing folks like after Al Torrico's left, we've been without that position, and so it's been hard for me to carry both hats. With the city councils said, let's go back to a more traditional structure, so we'll have a Director of Community Development that you will be working with directly. I'm gonna go back and be a planning on the public works guy. We'll still work closely together, because we do not want to have a silo, and a lot of cities get really siloed when they split those apart. The good news, we're all working together, but Civil and Justin and Andrea in our planning department will be reporting to Jeffrey Ryan, and we will bring him in and feed him full of stuff and launch him loose with you guys. And so we're looking forward to that. He's from San Diego, has a, I'll let him tell more about his background when he gets here, a high energy. I think he's gonna enjoy this. He has some friends who live here, so he kind of heard about Mill Creek when he saw the job go by, and so he's pretty excited about this. He's got a family, couple of small kids, plans to live in the community, so we're excited to have him here, but that's gonna take him time to unload his house down there and bring his California San San Diego kind of money up here and try to buy a house.
Okay.
Thanks.
No, thank you. I think that's it, unless any commissioners have good of the order? So then I'd asked our motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? Second? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, a busy time.